Half a day and welcome again to the Guam Congress Building. This is a hearing that is being reconvened after recess at approximately 9:10 a.m. We had convened for the reappointments of Anita F. Orlino, the reappointment of Maria G. Cruz, and the reappointment of Ronald F. Eclavea to serve as members of the Guam and ancestral lands commission for terms of four years from the date of confirmation. This morning, we talked about the compliance with the open government law. We talked about the powers and duties of the commission, and we had testimony from the director of the ancestral lands commission, Mr. John Birch, in support of all three nominees. And that was read by the acting director, who's still with us, Catherine Blas, Sisus Masi. And we also heard from the nominee, Ms. Orlino, and we had completed the questions for her nomination. Ms. Orlino has served on this commission now for 21, almost 21 years, as well as all the other nominees that we are discussing this morning. So we're going to proceed with the reappointment of Maria G. Cruz, who is the current secretary and treasurer, and her appointment is to serve as a member of the Guam and ancestral lands commission for a term of four years from date of confirmation. So we've heard the testimony from the acting director, and Ms. Cruz's packet, nomination packet, includes her resume, being previously employed as assistant administrator from Gura, government ethics training in 2020, received a public housing manager certification in April 1990, underwent training for performance appraisal in April of 1988. And again, she has served on this commission for 21 years and serves also as its secretary and treasurer. So I want to thank you for your work on the commission and your willingness to serve. If there's any testimony that you would like to provide, you have the floor. Or is there anyone else here who would like to testify on behalf of Ms. Cruz? If not, then Ms. Cruz, you may proceed. Do you, yeah, did you want to give any testimony regards to your nomination?
Well, thank you for the today's schedule for our confirmation hearing. The only thing that's really challenging for me personally at the moment is the rules and regulations for the return of the excess land to compensate those families whose properties were on the federal excess land. Were, a lot of families were awarded back their lands. However, there's some properties that were not given back, retained by the government, and we are still not able to compensate them because we have a, it's really not too clear on the, you know, I'm sure it's clear about the ones that are retained by the government of Guam, but the one that's a future release, I don't think, for me personally, it should be combined with the current, with the clear regulations to compensate the ones that were retained by the government. So that's my only, the only issue that I feel is, should be, I think, clear by the legislature, because I think we submitted for further clarification, for further work, you know, to make it more clear. We do have a suggested methodology for reimbursement. That should be simple, but that's, you know, that's the only thing. That's only my, only concern right now.
Sisus Masi, and my apologies, I failed to recognize my colleagues with me here today as well for this confirmation hearing are the vice chair of the Committee on Land, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Jesse Lohan, Sisus Masi colleagues. All right. Okay, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions then, if you don't mind, Ms. Cruz. One of them will be regarding those rules and regs, but let me start off with, do you have any continuing business or interests that might be a conflict of interest for you to continue to serve as a member of the Guam ancestral lands commission?
Not at all.
Have you been able to balance your duties on this commission with your other duties in your life and attend the meetings regularly?
My records speak for itself, yes.
Are there efforts by the commission, or you yourself, to improve the evaluation of applications for use of your property in your inventory, and most importantly, the evaluation of previous applicants in order to, you know, lease property? I guess I'm trying to ask, have you taken any steps or any ideas to prevent arrears in rent due to the commission and of course, due to the beneficiaries?
You know that, I have thought of that. Currently, we're taking things case by case, especially with the COVID situation where, you know, the deferment, the request for deferment of payment was really legitimate, but, you know, we still have some tenants that are behind, and we should, I will be submitting or making a request that we start establishing rules and regulations when it comes for, to request for rent deferment.
Would you support returning to in-person meetings to encourage more engagement with the landowners?
You know, we have GIDA as our property manager, and they report to us whenever we meet on a regular meeting to, they give us a list of what's happening, whether they're current, under rent, and if they are behind. And then we would ask them, when they're sort of really way behind, what efforts have they made to collect those rent? And then we have thought now of giving the, these landlords time to update or give us another explanation on why they are really behind. Otherwise, we may have to proceed on serving eviction notices to those that are, you know, are way behind and no reasonable explanation on why they're behind.
So the properties are managed by GIDA for the ancestral lands commission, and the ancestral lands commission pays GIDA to do that, right?
Yes, Speaker.
And they, but you're saying that GIDA does not go after the delinquent rents until the board authorizes, the commission authorizes it. Is that correct?
Somewhat, yes.
Somewhat? No, you explain.
Yes, yes. We, we still control the, you know, issuance of eviction notice after GIDA details the efforts they've made to collect. So we would do the ultimate decision on whether or not to serve the notice of eviction.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking about meetings being in person or encouraging the participation of landowners, I'm talking about those landowners who are beneficiaries of the trusts, who have not received yet any compensation, right? And that that is our mission to complete, right, on the ancestral lands commission? But we're, I don't see in the records that these potential, or these beneficiaries are present at the meetings or, and I'm just thinking that in-person meetings might be more suitable for them to be invited and to come, just to hear the business of, you know, what is the status of what's going on.
Well, if need be, we will, you know, establish maybe a lesson to contact them, but we're thinking that because we send out notices of our meeting on the agenda, that that should suffice. But if not, if you don't feel it's sufficient, I guess we can take a look at other method of reaching out to these families.
Yeah, you know, the notice should suffice. Are your meetings all in person now, or are they all by Zoom?
They are still virtual.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about. Okay. Were the landowners of, the original landowners of the Eda Agaga property engaged in the discussion regarding the sale of Eda Agaga, which the ancestral lands commission agreed to by resolution in 2023, or resolution 2023-004? That resolution agreed to have it appraised and approved a license, of course, appraised for the purpose of sale or license?
I believe, if I recall, that's sell or lease, yes.
That's correct. But were the landowners engaged in that discussion, to your knowledge, when the, when the commission was making that decision?
We, I don't think it was really publicly, you know, I don't think it's, I mean, we're relying on the, on our notices for public hearing and the agenda, but no, I don't, I don't think that real efforts to include these families were, were done.
All right. Let me pause and recognize my colleague for joining us, also Senator Chris Barnett, Sisus Masi, and Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you for joining us. All right. Well, that was a departure, I guess, from what I had seen in the past regarding sale of property in your inventory. And so I guess I just wanted to ask the nominees, you right now, do you support the sale of these crown lands? Is this part of the master plan of the Guam ancestral lands commission? Is that, that you've decided there are some that should be sold versus leased?
I personally feel that it should be just leased.
I had asked earlier, and I'm going to ask you again also, that, so there were legal concerns regarding the ability of the Guam ancestral lands commission to return property. And so the, the director of the Guam ancestral lands commission had advised the Eagles Field landowners, who were called to a meeting by the administration, and he advised them that they would never receive their land back based on the legal opinion by GIDA's lawyer on Public Law 106504 and verbal legal advice from other lawyers, including the governor's legal counsel, that he said he did not have in writing when we asked him. And but, you know, I was concerned at that time, and I guess I'm asking you, do you concur with this opinion that, that these private landowners are being told that they will never get their land back even though their land is on the excess land list or the potential to be returned?
I'm not aware that they were told that.
All right, that's fair. So you, you were talking about the rules and regs, and you said it's easy to compensate those whose property have been returned to the government of Guam, but not returned to the original landowner, such as Tizen. How, how do you foresee that being compensated?
Well, with Tizen, that's another.
The airport properties.
Right. That, that's really another, I mean, that's really complicated. I know one, at one point in time, there was a Tizen land trust, which was, there was a lot of activists, and that was really meant for the Tizen property owners, because that would gain, I mean, all the heirs will have a pocket, you know, same pocket and distribution that's supposed to, all the money that's earned from that, for that trust, will be given to the heirs. But I, I'm not sure, maybe the landowners are not aware of the intent, but that went down the drain when it was, you know, appealed, so.
Yeah, there was a court case and said, we had to take care of those beneficiaries, that are the beneficiaries by law. And if we didn't, and we were taking care of others, then that would be like takings, right, taking from them. That's very simplified version. We have some lawyers here in the room. But to your knowledge, have there been any other meetings with other original landowners who have not received their property back, that the ancestral lands commission is advising them on the status, or that it would not be returned, or that it would be returned, or anything?
I'm sorry, can you, Speaker, can you repeat the question?
Have there been other meetings? So I talked about that meeting regarding the Eda Agaga, no, yeah, or the Eagles Field, sorry, Eagles Field. And have there been other meetings that you know of where the original landowners have been invited and that people from the ancestral lands commission is telling them their property will be returned, will not be returned, or giving them representations outside of your commission meetings?
I don't think so. I don't.
All right. So as we explained earlier, there is, there was a dichotomy in, in understanding. Well, previous boards had voted that they did not want to enforce the current law. They wanted rules or rules and regs and the law to be changed so that they could compensate those who are not currently beneficiaries of this trust. These are people, the current beneficiaries are those whose lands had been returned to the government of Guam and kept, such as the airport, kept for government of Guam purposes. That movement would have included to compensate those whose lands are not slated for return, such as Taraji Beach, and that those people would also be compensated from the current inventory of the trust. And, yeah, so that's kind of, the court decision came in on one of those. There's a bill by the governor suggesting to compensate everybody, and we had talked about it at the hearing we had on that bill, whether there would be enough money in the trust to compensate all those, all those landowners whose property we deem are not going to be returned, right? And what are your thoughts on that? Do you think that that is viable to, to compensate all of those from your current inventory?
Speaker, I personally feel that we shouldn't include those excess land, like, I mean, those properties, like the Anderson Airports and Navy Station and, you know, all those properties that are still under the federal and may be, may never be returned. I don't, personally, I don't think that this should be included on this land bank trust.
Do you, are you familiar with the excess lands registry? So according to what I read this morning, that's supposed to consist of those lands that have already been deemed excess and slated for return, and those that in the future might be returned. And are you familiar with that list? And do you keep current with that at your board meetings?
I'm, right now, I'm not too, you know, I don't recall the list, but future excess land will mean, you know, those that are not being used by the federal and could possibly be, be returned to the government of Guam. And, yeah, but, yeah, that, that's my, my understanding of.
Yeah, you're right. Maybe returned to the government, of course. Maybe declared access in the future by the government of Guam as well. Yeah. So I guess that's, it's kind of speculative, right, to decide what's on there. But I just want to make sure, we do have a list of excess lands. We do have lands that are currently being returned. And the last time that I had a hearing and we talked about those lands, what is the status of those that were already slated to be returned? I was just concerned that the ancestral lands commission had no role in that, they said, until that property is actually in your hands or the title is deeded. But I think that I kind of disagree. I feel like this ancestral lands commission, you represent these landowners, and if they're not going to get their property back, it's, it's you who would know that, and you would be able to contact them because of the inventory and all of the data that you guys have and
Absolutely.
and that you, you could work with them to make sure that they're fully informed. All right. Thank you, Ms. Chris. And thank you again for your service on this board for all these years. I'm going to open it up for my vice chair, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly welcome to you continuing your nomination or your reappointment to the ancestral lands commission. The speaker did relay that the commission passed a resolution for the leasing of property at Eda Agaga, and I wanted to know what your position was on that, because we're a little concerned because we have obviously conflicting positions with regards to where a new hospital should be built. The legislature, through its majority vote, picked another location. Obviously, you're aware of that. So I'm kind of concerned because I don't want to see the ancestral lands commission become a political instrument of the administration, of this current administration or any administration, for whatever their agenda is. I'm hopeful that the ancestral lands commission is looking out for the interest of those that are recipients and intended recipients of land that previously had been taken away from them. So did you vote in favor of that resolution, and if so, why?
I'm sorry, can you, did I vote for a resolution?
Speaker had referenced a resolution that was passed last year to lease out or sell the property at Eda Agaga that is under the ancestral lands commission?
Yes, I voted, I agree to that, and that, you know, there's a provision, sell or lease. It was not just sell, it was just, you know, the option. And we really rely on this body to let us know. I mean, we are guided by the law. So if you say, you know, sell it, I'm not into, I don't really agree in selling, but, but we abide by the decision by the law. So if you want us to, to pursue on selling it or, or leasing it, you, you will let us know, yes.
Did you vote on this resolution?
I'm sorry?
Did you vote on the resolution?
Yes, I did. I voted, yes, because again, it says sell or lease.
Why did you vote on it, irrelevant of sale or lease? Why did you, knowing the political controversy that obviously exists with regards to this property? Because it's a pretty big decision. Why this particular property? Has there been any other resolutions passed in the time you've been there by the ancestral lands to sell or lease other properties or other crown lands?
Well, we didn't have something similar to this kind of issue. So, you know, and, and if we, if I did, you know, if it's, if I, I wasn't really, maybe, at that moment, okay, I'm just thinking again, and I'm not perfect now. It was because of the lease or, or sell provision. And of course, a lot of things will go, will need a legislative system of approval on our actions. So if you're aware and of what we had done in a resolution, and you don't think you agree with it, then you can always step in and say, stop the sale or stop the lease.
I don't feel we need to intercede when these are authorities we've granted of the ancestral lands commission. That's your responsibility, sitting there, to make these decisions. And we certainly want to make sure that decisions are being made in the interest of the recipients of ancestral lands. It's why it's created, to address what was a historical injustice to those of our people that had their lands taken by the federal government, or in some cases, the government of Guam. Government of Guam also has its list of properties that it's taken, that it's not compensated of the landowners. So I, you seem to be volleying that ball back to us, but I mean, you sit on the commission, you made the decision. You're asking to be reconfirmed back to this position. I would like to know why you made that decision. You don't need to bring it to us. I mean, we know what our responsibilities are, but why do we have to intercede on actions that you've been entrusted and been confirmed previously by the legislature to make? Are you making those interest decisions in the interest of the ancestral lands commission? Are you making those decisions on behalf of administrative influence, which to me is very concerning, be it this administration or any other?
Senator, whether we lease or sell, it would still benefit the beneficiaries. Whether we lease or sell, the money would still go back, going to that bank.
Did you ask what was the purpose of this lease? How much background were you given at the time before you voted on this resolution?
I don't recall.
This is 2023. This is just last year. You don't recall?
I don't recall.
You don't recall, but you want us to confirm you back?
No, Senator, I just do not recall.
You voted on such a significant resolution, of which you don't have a track history?
We usually deliberate and, you know, just talk about it, but no, and I don't even recall that. I don't recall.
Did you even know what the intended purpose was for this property?
Speaker, I mean, Senator Brown, I do not recall.
I'm stunned. You don't recall something like this that is not part of the normal course of actions by the ancestral lands commission, but you don't recall at all?
That's right. I do not recall.
And you're asking to be reconfirmed back to the ancestral lands commission?
I'm still willing to serve. You don't want me to serve them. That's okay.
No, I just simply want to ensure that people that are there making decisions on behalf of those recipients are engaged on the decisions that they're making. But you're telling me something as recent as last year, you don't recall your deliberation or whether you had any prior information, or whether or not the property or the intended use of the property, did you have knowledge at the time what the property was being intended
Speaker, we work as a team with the rest of the, with the rest of the members. And, and again, the provision there of sell or lease will still bring money into the bank.
I'm sure a lot of things could bring money into the bank, but we got to make responsible decisions on how we're bringing money into the bank, because there's a lot of ways, illicit and illegal ways to bring money into the bank. I want to know in particular of your decision, how you made that decision, and why did you make that decision? Were you aware of the controversy of the possible?
Again, I do not recall.
You don't recall? And that is what you're telling this body, that you don't recall how and why you made this decision?
Yes.
And that's your final answer?
That's my final answer.
Well, I don't have any further questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lohan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Marie Cruz. How are you doing this morning? Thank you for wanting to continue to, to serve in this capacity. You've served for how many years now?
I'm sorry?
21 years you've served? Twenty-one years you served?
Since 2003.
And again, thank you for wanting to continue to to serve. You know, there are a lot of controversies and challenges that the agency is undergoing at this point. Earlier, you had said that there was a methodology for the payment of ancestral landowners whose properties would not be given back. Can you share that methodology with us?
Okay, now, that's only a draft, okay? But it seems like the most rational way of distributing funds to the areas. And it's of course based on the area square footage that was taken away and kept by the government and what will be established as the reasonable amount. You know, and we're throwing this, you know, on the table where there it's going to be the fair market rent, I mean, fair market value at the time that that the government decided that the property was released by the federal. However, it was kept by the government of Guam. So we need to establish a date of that return. And then, uh, again, this is just a proposal, is then we will take the the fair market value times the maybe the standard rate on on interest that will accumulate to the time that we disburse the funds.
Do we have, I mean, a ballpark figure on 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 that amount? Because I know there's there's properties that are, of course, there's properties that are more valuable than others, like, for example, the airport runway area. Yeah, I mean, yeah, so there's properties again that hold more value than others. I mean, value in a sense, monetary value than others. So do you have a ballpark figure on that?
Again, that's another, I spoke about that earlier or that was discussed earlier. But that's a different amount of on dispersing, right? And 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 there was a TGen Land Trust Fund that was created, I believe it was by former Senator Forrest, and it was going to address these areas where the funds that are generated from the, you know, from the use of that property will go into the trust fund and it'll be distributed according to the, you know, the local probate law, you know, on distribution. So now I really don't know how that's going to be done. That's still.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, gosh, maybe we could look into it and see how much money's in there and based on, yeah.
That will piece the property, yes.
Sure.
Maybe the the less that you could.
Well, I mean, of course, I mean.
Can do that for us, but.
Sure. I mean, because you know, the methodology of, you know, again, eventually have to, unless that property is generating money, like the the TGen Land Trust situation where money will go there for the compensation, other properties, if they're not being used by the government, they would have to, again, properties that are being leased out. If that's enough for a total compensation of of properties that that are returned back. So I'm just wondering what the ballpark figure, so if you can find that out, I mean, just roughly what it is, you know, and if this government would be able to afford, you know, the, you know, the payback. I mean, if there's a fund that's.
If you're talking about specifically the TGen?
Well, not just the TGen, but that inclusive of the TGen and other properties that.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so, you know, ballpark figure because, you know, other trusts may be able to be be created for these other other properties as well alongside, again, the rental properties that you you guys put out for for commercial use and all that. But we definitely have a lot of work to do with the legislature's legislative side alongside the ancestral lands commission.
Absolutely, a lot of work, and I'm still willing to serve.
And again, I appreciate that. And thank you very much for the years that you have served and wanted to continue to serve. So with that being said, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Sido Masai, Senator Lujan. Senator Burnett.
Sido Masai, Madam Speaker. Thank you again for, to the nominee for being present. That's the first time I heard, I'm just new here, but that's the first time I ever heard a nominee say, "Anga Malago, vote for me. If not, never mind, I don't care." So, but I guess my question is, do you support the sale of any ancestral lands, just generally speaking?
Can you repeat your question?
Do you do you support the sale of any crown lands?
Oh, no, that was asked, I do not support the sale of any crown land.
So when you voted for the resolution that would have allowed the sale or the lease of those crown lands, I know you said you didn't recall.
Right.
But I'm hoping this will jog your memory a little bit. What was your reasoning there? Were you just hoping it'll be a lease and not a sale?
I'm, yeah, I was hoping it'll be a lease.
So you do recall?
I do recall agreeing, but the question earlier by Senator Brown was that, did I really think about it? Did I, you know, give it time or did I just say yes to the resolution?
Ma'am, did you receive any communication or directive from the office of the governor, lieutenant governor relative to this particular vote or or any vote?
No, I did not.
Okay, because.
I would have recalled that.
Thank you. Thank you for that, ma'am. Because I guess for me, there's a lot of influence outside of the normal process, right? Granted, I know we're the legislature and we can entertain different land issues, but what I see that's very troubling for me in in this term is you have people really lobbying very hard for arrangements or deals that don't fit into the rules and regulations or the parameters that we have set for our land agencies, specifically ancestral lands and Chamor Land Trust, right? It's almost like, hey, which senator are you, buddy? Give them the bill and we're going to ram it through and never mind what the actual commission wants. So for me, when I'm going to vote on a nominee, I want to make sure that I'm going to be supporting somebody who is of an independent mind, who can look at the issue per issue and make a decision, you know, free of outside influence, you know, which is more than I can savor some of my colleagues. But, you know, anyway, I'm just hoping that that's the kind of nominee you are. So if you could speak to that, ma'am?
I understand. Thank you.
Is that the kind of nominee you are? You make decisions?
I have, you know, when we are going to vote on an emotion, I think independently. And if you go to the street line, you're going to see me, you know, possibly not agreeing with another board member, but yes, I try at least to independently.
Thank you, because just based on what you said, you don't support the sale of the land, but you supported the resolution that would have allowed for the sale of the land. And so for me, I just want to make sure that when you make those kind of decisions, you're not making them based on what an administration wants, because I know that Governor Lieutenant Governor really pressuring the commissioners to support the sale of of the property.
And again, whatever decision, whether it be sale or lease, we would still bring money into the bank.
But you don't support bringing money into the bank by way of sale of the crown lands? Just on, if you could just give us a final answer on that on the record, because that is going to be.
We try to avoid sale.
So you can't say definitively?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sido Masai, Senator Burnett. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good good morning, Mrs. Cruz. I just wanted to touch bases with you regarding a statement you made earlier regarding excess lands and those that are, I guess, doesn't seem like they're going to get their land back. And I'm just wondering, you know, with the land bank trust, how much is in the trust right now?
If I recall, it's over 11 million.
Okay, and has any money been dispersed at all from that trust?
Not yet.
And the reason for that?
We need to get rules and regulations. That was one of our challenges we have done, have done yet. As soon as we get a clear law on the who is really eligible to receive the, to to receive the funds as a beneficiary of the properties that were taken but kept by the government, then so that's.
Okay, can you, can you explain what are the issues that are more controversial or that are difficult to address?
Explain earlier to the speaker, the controversy which we had brought to the attention of the legislature is that on one, on one of the sections, it says to, that the beneficiaries will be the ones whose land were taken by, I mean, was released by the federal as excess, but but kept by the government of Guam. That's one. And then another area or section under the law, it says, all future access, I mean, all future access or non-access. So so non-access may mean that Anderson Naval Station and all those that are still kept by the military, so they would also benefit on that land bank trust. And and personally, I don't think that was, that's right. So we need this body to make it clear on who is going to benefit from the land bank trusts. So that is, in other words, Senator, the ball is in your court.
Okay, just to be clear, your position is who should not benefit from this?
That's correct. Or in other words, shouldn't benefit yet.
So the people, can you just state, restate in the record, who do you think should not benefit from the land trust?
The ones that should not benefit are the ones whose lands are not yet returned by the federal as excess and the ones that who will never see their property back, such as the ones who own land in Anderson, again, I have to use that as an example, and Naval Station and other areas that are still being used by the military.
And what is the reason for that, for your position?
Because I don't personally feel that the government want should be made to pay for the the lands that are still held by the federal, the military.
Okay, then do you think they're owed anything, those that you think will never get their land back?
No, I do not think that they're owed anything by the government of Guam on this category of of families.
Okay, that seems to be an issue because I think that's probably the most needed group that if they're never going to get their land back. So I don't know, I disagree with that either. Okay, in regards to.
Excuse me, Senator, but this would be the ones who I think independently, that if the rest of the members agree to just having any, I mean, any family's benefits whose properties would never be returned by the federal, then that's, I would say, no. So just for an example of thinking independently.
Okay, and then the other thing you mentioned about those that whose land was returned to Gov Guam and it's retained by Gov Guam, what is your position on that? Should the ancestral lands commission?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So you were mentioning earlier, there were two points that need to be resolved. The other, the other point that you mentioned was a land that that was deemed an excess by the federal government and was turned to Gov Guam and it's still held within Gov Guam's hands. What is your position on that?
On the land?
Should the land trust compensate those?
Okay, on on federal lands that are returned but kept by the government of Guam, that that should be more simple, you know, than the other one that was mentioned where the federal, the lands will never be returned. Okay, now, I 100% agree on that, on on land that were kept by the government after it's returned by the federal.
Okay, so you're, what is your position to return the land to the the landowners or to compensate them with the land trust?
The ones that would not be, that are kept by the government, they should be compensated, yes.
If I may interject here, that is the law. So your position is consistent with the law. And in other words, you're correct, that that's what the law says, that that's what your mission is to do. So you're saying that that's your opinion on what you should do is is consistent with the law. The confusion lies in that there are other proposals to compensate others or there were rules and regs drafted at one point to compensate others, and that's where the confusion came in. But in order to change this law that says who we're going to compensate, and that is those whose land is retained by the government of Guam after being returned by the federal government, those are the beneficiaries of your trust right now. And if that is going to change, then that should be done very formally, not by mere rules and regs. And that's what the AG had told us it was inconsistent in the past to try to do that. Thank you. They also tried to do, to benefit other beneficiaries by another law, and I think that, or no, to benefit one portion of the beneficiaries only, and then that was also criticized by the court and rejected.
All right, thank you. The other question, I know you were trying to explain it, I think, to my colleague here regarding compensation. And so there's this term just compensation, which is, I think, has received, you know, bad connotation over the years because what is seen as market value back then is peanuts today. That's my thinking, because like the the land value was so much lower back in the day than what it is today. And I think we can, we can safely assume that the cost of land is just going to increase in future generations, considering land is limited here on Guam. So, I mean, how does the ancestral lands commission really kind of hone in on this, what's considered just compensation?
I have no strong opinion on that. Now, this should be the same, the excess land retained by the government should be the same as the government of Guam acquiring or condemning a piece of property for 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 public use. So they would be compensated by the fair market value at the time. Now, so the time will be when this, or the period of time of when these properties were returned and when it was kept by the government. So to me, that's my opinion, and when we should establish the fair market value then. And then add or calculate the interest that they would have gotten all the way to the time that we that we compensate them under the, or issue the funds under the land bank trust. So, and that law is there, you know, under real estate, I read that. So I don't think, I think we should follow that unless the, unless the legislature will create a different type of law for this kind of issue or the situation.
Yeah, I think maybe there should be a little bit more research. I mean, if we look back on, you know, land and wealth, right? Wealth is accumulates over time and it's not just, you know, we're not just talking about interest. And, you know, people that had the resources back then can really gain, gain wealth over time that cannot be captured in what these just compensation formulas provide. And so, you know, maybe asking you to to look at it at a bigger picture than than these formulas. So, so, yeah, yeah, I was just looking at the the enabling act for ancestral lands. And so it does, it does talk about original. And so it does talk about original landowners that you do, that's part of your mandate, is to serve those. And so I guess the question I have is, what does the ancestral lands, or what do you think the ancestral lands commission's role in supporting those original landowners who their land was confiscated? And you just said earlier that the land trust, they should not be beneficiaries. But then yet, that doesn't, that seems to conflict with what the mandate is for ancestral land. So how do you, how do you resolve that?
Sorry, Senator, can you repeat the question?
Okay, maybe we'll, I'll ask that question another time. Yeah, thank you. Or do you have a response to that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so is it true that you're supposed to have original landowners registry? And then how do you, how do you address those?
I believe we have that, you know, in order.
Then what is the role of ancestral lands to address their loss?
Well, okay, when, first of all, our method of reaching out to these families, of course, is at a few times, we spent a lot of money listing the properties and the owners then. So, and when they do come in, we, of course, have they submit an application, and we ask for an abstract of title. And so that would show the ownership and if there are actually heirs. So after, you know, after that, we have a public hearing on these families who've submitted, when we're entertaining their application. After the public hearing, after we make a decision, again, it's going to be publicized, that we are intent to give these families, you know, these lot numbers. So they have 10 days to write whether they are against it and show up at the next process and our application process in issuing this lot or awarding them the lots.
Okay, and I remember from previous hearings, there wasn't a lot of responses. Is that correct?
In the beginning, the beginning of our, you know, early when I was commissioned, there was, there was a lot of families, and we gave up, you know, a lot, we gave them their properties back. And I recall that, you know, the corn building, we were situated, we even stayed up too late just, you know, to assist, to entertain the application process. But, yeah, it's been a rewarding experience for me, as well as the other members of this commission.
Okay, have you seen any progress as far as reaching out to all prospective landowners? I know there's a lot that have moved to the states or moved elsewhere. And have you reached, spread your, I guess, request outside of Guam?
Well, we have discussed maybe reaching out to the tomorrow club. And I'm not too sure if we've done that already, but we have made efforts to reach out, even to the, I believe, the village mayor. But that was, but we don't continuously do this, but we have paid a lot of money, maybe years back, and advertised me to see if, you know, we can get them in. And we had like maybe one or two respond on that publication or that ad.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Cruz. I know there's a lot of discussion. I know we have more confirmations to hear. So I appreciate your responses. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Sisusmasi, Senator Perez. Again, Sisusmasi, Mrs. Cruz, and thank you again for your service on the commission. And you're answering to these questions. Some of these are very difficult, because we're talking about what should be, or theories, but I appreciate your answers. Sisusmasi.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with the confirmation of hearing for Ronald Eclavea, Ronald F. Eclavea. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on behalf, on his behalf? If not, then we'll hear from the nominee directly. Mr. Eclave is currently the chairperson of the ancestral lands commission and has served as well for 21 years, just as the other, Ms. Cruz. Would you like to present any testimony, Mr. Eclave?
Buenas, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the appointment to the governor. And basically, I'm open for any questions.
All right, I'm going to try to bring us back to, first of all, do you have any conflicts that would, going forward, prevent you from serving again in this capacity?
No, not at all.
All right, so we're talking about, you know, a discourse between the current law, which is who we're going to compensate. Those are the people whose land was declared excess by the federal government, returned to the government of Guam, and the government of Guam held it, kept it, used it, continues to use it. Those people, according to this law, should be compensated by the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission out of its crown lands investments. And we haven't done that yet. And the reason why was because there was a disagreement as to who should be compensated despite what the law said. So now we have a choice before us to go forward with this law and now, and very clearly compensate these people. We have some estimates, I think these were from another hearing, where they gave us estimates of how much the trust, based on its current investments, could support paying out, like $500,000 to $700,000 a year or something. But that's with its current investments, that's, and otherwise, if it wanted to change the law, as it suggested at one point during rules and regulations drafting, it was going way beyond the current law to things suggested by some of my colleagues that, and by the governor, that we cover all those people, but the amounts, the estimates are, of course, much higher and not, doesn't look like would be able to compensate in any significant amount all of that group of landowners on Guam, whose property also had been taken but had not been declared excess yet. And I just want to, I guess, maybe confirm with you, this is the state that we are in, the status. Is that correct?
I think you hit it, hit it on the nail on the head.
All right, and then with your investments currently, we've got some money in the bank, right? And we've got current investments. Is this, how do you feel about compensating those? There may be some clarifications necessary to make sure that you're consistent, but to moving forward and compensating those who, we currently have a list of them, whose land fits this category, whose land was returned or declared excess, returned to government of Guam, kept by government of Guam. The number one example is the airport, right?
Yes.
So are you, have you discussed during your meetings about moving forward with compensation for those people? I mean, is there enough? Or what is your goal? What is the plan? Are you trying to get more money or?
Yes, of course, we're moving towards, of course, leasing, developing our properties to generate more revenue to compensate the lands, these lands that were kept by the government of Guam. I'm of the opinion that the government of Guam is responsible for those lands that they have kept. And I believe that the government of Guam should compensate these landowners, extinguish their claims, like Tijin and other such properties. The other properties that's still in the federal government, the military, why would the government of Guam be responsible for those properties? I mean, I'm, I mean, it is an injustice. The federal government owes them. I still have a piece of property that they still, that's still in the government, the federal government. But why would the government of Guam be responsible for it? So when we were developing the rules and regs for years, we were at each other's throats, because it seems to say this, it seems to say that. And finally, we ended up having to just come up with something with it. And then after years and years and getting criticized for not putting out these rules and regs, and then to find out from our legal counsel that it's, we can't do it, it contradicts, the law contradicts. So what we gave you is some kind of a solution by the board, maybe reluctantly, we probably want to take it back. I'm not sure right now, it's just a big mess. But right now, in my personal opinion, I don't see why the government of Guam should be responsible for those. I mean, for something that they're not, they didn't take these lands. Federal government owns it. It's an injustice. They owe it back. They need to remedy this injustice. So that's where we're at right now. There's a cloud on the enabling legislation, on the law, and it's before you now. It's in your hands to.
This thing about it's in our hands, if the rules are drafted consistent with the law, it's viable, right? There are questions, like not defined there, such as how, what are you going to, what's your compensation, right? And how are you going to make your payments? Those are going to be determined by the commission itself. Like, is it going to be a one-time? Is it going to be, you know, regular? Just different things. However, yeah, so those things still might need to be resolved.
I mean, it is, it is a task. I heard some of the questions you've asked our board members. And I think it's doable. We could find a way to extinguish the claims of the landowners. There's got, it's kind of tough to appraise military lands. That's what we had a problem with.
All right, and have you been keeping track of the excess lands that are being returned?
Well, you know, what we're getting is secondhand information, you know, so whether it's, we have, we have an idea.
All right, but that's why I'm asking, because it seems to me that it should be, you should be directly informed of all the status of the excess lands being returned, or even being listed as excess lands, because those are your additional beneficiaries if the government keeps it, right? So we've seen in the newspaper talk about, one example is a USO. I don't know the status. I don't know if that has original landowners or not, but if it did, and they keeping it, those are again added to your list.
I don't believe that one was secondhand, and that, we did get word from our director that it's possible those lands are coming back and that we should be looking for it.
You need to, I would ask for a list. There is a list of excess lands that are deemed excess already, agreed to being returned.
I think that's, I think that's the only one.
There are some that are in progress. No.
I mean, if you have it, I mean.
No, I pointed this out to you before. So this list comes from GIDEA, and then the governor, and then it's bonded to by the Secretary of Defense, or the Secretary of the Navy, and those, that's how they form their list. So the law, our current law says the Director of Land Management should inform you. So you should obtain it from him, direct information. He knows the status, if they have returned the property to the government of Guam or not, and whether the government of Guam has in turn, you know, sought to use it. Obviously, they're not giving it to you, so.
Well, at this point, nothing's been given to us.
Yeah, so I think you should follow up with that, because that is part of your duties, I think, is, and you need to know, how many more beneficiaries are you looking at, right? How much more property is the government of Guam going to keep? And those people then become beneficiaries, right?
Yep, and Madam Speaker, we have been diligent in getting up to, you know, updates on where we're at with this, and even getting with GIDEA to request for more, declare other properties excess.
The Director of Land Management should have those information. All right, what about, I asked you about conflicts and the meetings. Do you have any objection to? Well, I'm just suggesting, if we want to invite landowners to the meeting, or just make sure that they are heard before we act on property that might affect them, that in-person meetings might be more conducive to that, as opposed to them trying to catch the Zoom. And I'm just wondering if you have any objection to having either a mix or some of in-person meetings?
Yeah, no, we try to make an effort. We publicize the meetings. And we try to make an effort to get all the responsible parties involved in this, in our meetings.
All right, well, then what happened with the Eagles Field? Because you guys passed a resolution without talking to the landowners themselves.
Well, Eagles Field, that, are you sure it's Eagles Field?
Well, you did one on Ede Agaga, right? On the sale or lease of Ede Agaga. That's in your inventory, and then.
That's not Eagles Field, though.
Yeah, no, and then there was Eagles Field, no, you're right. You guys did not do a resolution on Eagles.
Yes, yes, yes. So your question regarding Ede Agaga, what's your question?
Yeah, those were crown lands, right? Those were crown lands. So there were no landowners involved in that one?
No, no.
All right, but I'm trying to, okay.
And we're all for leasing any of our properties and developing.
Yeah, how come you haven't pursued before, you know, someone else in the government wants it? How come you don't pursue leasing those properties?
Well, typically, if people, if government entities or any entity, business or not, they would make a letter of interest. And we haven't, you know, been receiving letters of interest for so many years. I mean, there's, maybe it's the pandemic, the economy, I'm not sure. But this was an opportunity for the ancestral lands to make income, and it's, even though it says lease or sell, the board is looking at leasing. And we're fine with generating revenue. That's what our purpose is for, to generate revenue, to extinguish the claims of our landowners. So the whole board was for it.
Right, but I believe the question was about, so the board had authorized, pretty much agreed to an appraisal for the sale or lease. It didn't seem like the board would have the final say whether it was a sale or a lease, especially, you know, if it comes through here, then it's going, it was being asked to be.
We made sure in our hearing that it was just an option. And we got assurance it was just an option. And that's why we voted for it, because the board is basically, and we're for, you know, for a lease. I mean, they could, maybe this, if it's a sale, and there was a number given, but what happens if it triples or quadruples that number? Do we want to just get that out of the question? The option is there, although the board is just looking at leasing our properties. Okay, there's some instances where we did sell.
All right, oh, and then, sorry.
So we are for, we are for leasing our properties.
You say there are instances where you did sell?
Where we did sell.
Did?
Yes.
Oh, where are those?
That was through the legislature. That was dealing with GW, yeah, I mean, we could have said, no, we don't want to sell. But, you know, you're, you know.
Not me. That was the legislature, you're saying, authorized a sale to GWA of ancestral lands property?
Yes, yes. So there are situations where the board right now, I mean, it's going to be rare. I mean, I'm not totally against a sale. I mean, if it's going to allow us to get, you know, benefit the board in a substantial way, I'm for it. If it's going to, we're going to sell five acres and get 100 acres, why not?
All right.
But we're not in the process of trying to sell our lands.
All right. You hire your director?
Do we what?
Hire your director? This is a commission?
I think our director's appointed by the governor, and then we just approve him. But we are paying, we do pay? Yeah, and I think he's under, he's under our, we're paying him under our, yeah. Okay, so yes, probably that's clarification.
Director? Yes. The director, Mr. Birch, was appointed by the governor, but needed confirmation from the board in order to continue as the director.
All right, so that is within. So that is within the board's control, right? Okay. And, yeah, I had asked the two other nominees earlier whether they were aware that the director had met with the Eagles Field landowners. This is where the Eagles Field came in. The Eagles Field...
Am I aware of that?
...had landowners, met with them, and he was the one advising them that, this is the director of the Ancestral Lands Commission advising them that they will never get their property back, they should take this deal.
I was there at that...
Yeah, I wasn't either.
I was there.
Oh, you were there?
I was there, yeah. And in essence, what he was...
Oh, you were there?
Yeah, I was there, yes, at that meeting. And in essence, what he's, what he's referring to is, you know, I mean, I can't really speak for him, but the way I took it, is that what he's referring to is the legislation, the law, that it states that it's unlike previous land returns that, that left that open. He's saying this one kind of like cut, cut, cut any loopholes in there where it must be public benefit. That's how we took it. And our legal counsel, we asked our legal counsel at the time, and he confirmed it. It's like you can't give these lands back. Or you, well, we could, but there's a cloud, going to be a cloud on the title, whether they can actually get title insurance and what, all those, and the like with it. So that's where we're at. It's not that we won't give it back. We probably will give it back, maybe. You know, our, our position is to give all these lands back to the original landowners, period. Now, yeah, so these clouds that they put in there, that's what the director was referring to. And I didn't think he was meaning you ain't going to get it back. He was just saying, that language seems like it's going to inhibit us from giving you, you know, your land back without, you know, not much trouble. You're going to have trouble with the properties, per se. That's it.
I just find it a little bit concerning that we have the person in the government of Guam, the only entity in the government of Guam that is really tasked to oversee return of excess lands, argue that these lands were already deemed excess, so they absolutely should be returned, or they were, you know, that, why, why argue the opposite? Why argue the opposite that even if they were...
Yeah, we were taking it back at the language. Why was that put in there? I mean, why was it, and it was too specific with the language?
You're talking about Congress. So Congress, of course, puts restrictions, and that, they've done this for decades, right? Every property returned has some restrictions in it and covenants, right? That's, that's how they do it. But we've still found ways and reasons, and we've never told landowners, give it up, right? We've said, we'll fight for you, we support you, this is what we're here for, this is what our commission does. We are going to find a way, and we're going to tell you the facts. The facts is that, yeah, it looks like that was excess property at one time, right? The government of Guam suggested it was. The secretary of the Navy suggested it might be.
Speaker, your interpretation might be true of how you took the directors. It might be true. I'm just giving you my, how I took it.
No, well, I appreciate yours, because you were there, I wasn't. It's just what I heard from the landowners. So we also had testimony after testimony from the landowners, and there is no testimony of, in all this period, of the Ancestral Lands Commission to me, right? Like, just stepping up and advocating that if it's excess, it should be returned.
I want to give it back.
Like you said, you guys have done a great job getting the land that you get.
I mean, if we can give it back, we'll give it back.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to open it up now for Senator Brown, vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and certainly welcome, Mr. Chairman, for your testimony on your reconfirmation to the Ancestral Lands Commission. This has me wondering, how do you go about announcing properties that may be up for sale or lease? Do you have an announcement that's made so that anyone and everyone who has an interest can apply? Or do I simply knock on your door and say, I want this specific property, and you simply entertain my interest in it?
We're open to, we're open to any and all opportunities.
How do you go about doing that, though?
Well, we, we, we have, what we do is we go, we go with GIDEA, and we have them put out an RFP for our properties, not for sale, for development, you know, partnership or development or lease.
And how does GIDEA go about doing that? I mean, do they announce it publicly?
Yes, they announce it. Yes, then there's a window frame.
And is there a timeframe to...
Yeah, there's a timeframe, and then they pick up, of course, companies or whoever's interested pick up the packets, and then they have, we have, we have a rating committee and goes in and rates, and then we go into negotiations with the top bidder and then sign a contract.
So on this, this property in Ede Agaga, it was announced publicly, or did it just come up as a result of the administration's interest in it?
Yeah, apparently it was...
How did that come to be?
Yeah, apparently it was the administration that was interested in, we, of course, we knew about what was going on with Eagles Field. And, you know, hey, if it, I was, if there, if the opportunity's for Ede Agaga, I'm for it. I'm not, it's not political or anything, I was just for it. If it's someplace else is better, fine. But if it's going to benefit the Ancestral Lands Commission and its heirs, I'm all for it. But I'm not for, at this point, I'm not for a sale, a lease. I'm fine if it, if the, if the atmosphere is for somewhere else, okay, we lost it.
So why would the resolution include for sale, then, if you're not for sale?
Well, when it came up and it was on it, we questioned it in our hearing. It says, well, look at it, it's a sale or lease. We don't want to, we don't want to, we don't, at this time, we don't want to sell, but well, you can lease it. So we agreed.
So is it, is your resolution only to lease, or does it include the language to sell and lease, or lease?
It says sell or lease. That's what it says, sell or lease. So the board was comfortable with it because our intention is to lease it. And it was basically just giving them the opportunity to go in and investigate the land. That's how we took it, and that's our legal counsel.
But if your intent is only to lease it, why would you include sell at all?
We didn't include the sell. It was in there in the language. We didn't include it in there. It was in there. But we were fine with it because our intention is not to lease it. I mean, to sell, I'm sorry, yeah. Not to sell, to lease it.
And how were these announcements made? I don't read them in the paper.
Announcements?
Yeah, how does GIDEA make the announcement to interested parties that you have all this land available that you probably could, people could purchase or lease from you?
That's the purpose of, of the Ancestral Lands Commission. You guys gave us that, that authority and that ability to go in...
I understand that. I'm specifically asking, how are these announcements made? Because I've never seen an announcement.
Well, are you specifically regarding, you're regarding Ede Agaga, right?
That or any other property?
No, any other, well, any other properties, we authorize GIDEA. We want these properties to put out these properties.
And how does, and how does GIDEA announce that to the public? Do they simply just do it on their website, or how is that done? I've never seen a listing, and maybe I don't look at the paper every day, but...
Yeah, we've...
How do they provide notice?
Well, yeah, advertisements, and they publish it in the papers. Companies come in, interested parties come and pick up, you know, or we get a letter of interest. We get a, oh, they're interested in that property, wow, we didn't know that that property was attractive or at this point, you know, there was an appetite for that piece of, hey, you know, GIDEA, can you RFP these properties out? That's how it is. And they advertise it, there's a given timeframe, and that's how we've been doing it for years. I believe that's how the other agencies are doing it.
And so what's the feedback on this specific property? What's, what's the status of it now? This is Ede Agaga, I'm focused on that.
Oh, we don't know. We have no, we have no idea what's going on. We're just willing to lease it, whether to anybody.
GIDEA hasn't given you any feedback? What's going on with that?
We don't, we don't know. I have no idea. No, no idea. No, no idea.
And does your executive director keep track of this? I mean, it seems odd that you'd have no knowledge of, if there's a timeframe in which the announcements are made and any interested party, you know, everyone has an equal opportunity to apply for it, and there's a timeframe...
We only gave them authority to investigate the property, and if they come back and say, we like it, we want to do this, and let's draft some documents.
So has an RFP been put out for it, or is it just an investigatory interest? What, where are we at that?
The way we took it, it was just an investig, a vestigo, tongue twister there.
Okay, so, so GIDEA has not announced it, then, to any, any other interested party or anyone who wants to apply for it?
Not that I know of, but anybody can come in. Anybody can come in and say, I want it. Anybody.
So GIDEA, who, who requested to go in and determine whether the property would be of use to do this investigatory process? Who's doing it? Who made the request to do it?
You mean, you're talking about going in and doing the survey?
Whatever it is that they want to do with it, yeah. Who made the request?
That, that, I believe that came from the, the front office. They're the ones that want to lease the property for a hospital. So it's investig...
And up till this time, you have no feedback from GIDEA or anybody else with the outcome or interest?
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, they, they paid for it themselves. Yeah, so...
Yeah, no, I wouldn't expect you to pay for it. But have they given you any feedback since then, or it's silent, or what?
Nope. Yeah, there's nothing. Nothing at all.
With reference to the appraisal report, which was brought up in our last hearing, DPW has still not provided us with the final appraisal reports. We've sent numerous emails.
So that's all, is that all you're waiting for, is DPW to respond, or...
We don't know if it's dead in the water. We don't know what's going on.
And why would DPW provide an appraisal for land?
The RFP went through Department of Public Works.
They're the ones that are processing it?
Yes, for the appraisal report.
Yeah, because they're trying to get a, they're trying to get a number to, for the lease.
And so, okay, well, we'll see where that goes. Very interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm being honest, if it's going to benefit the Ancestral Lands Commission, right, I'm for it.
Well, I can understand the advocacy. That's certainly a role in, in your position to advocate for the ancestral lands. But at the same time, you know, we understand also the other dynamics, the politics that's being played here.
And of course, if there's other, you know, something else involved that we don't see, we're interested. Let us know, what, what's the possibility of this prop, you know, the property being abused or whatever? We're, we're, we're the landlords. We have GIDEA, and GIDEA so far has been doing a great job.
And if you, and if you lease the property, who's, who's going to manage it or oversee it to make sure that whatever your lease requirements are being met?
It's our property manager, GIDEA.
Yeah, because we don't want to see the same thing we saw with the Raceway Park.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, totally different situation. Yeah, we're, it's GIDEA.
Well, I think it's just making sure that the property is, is being used in compliance, because what, in the event they start construction and it doesn't complete, then what?
And I agree with you there, Senator. I agree.
Are you going to be left with whatever's constructed or halfway constructed, or whatever the case may be? Who's going to address returning the property back to a useful site?
It's the same thing with all our other leases. What, what happens if a company comes in and they qualify and they start, we go through the same processes as anything.
And what happens when the lease ends? I mean, if they build a, I mean, if, if one of our, you know, telecommunications companies build a facility on your property and the lease expires, what happens then? Who's, who's the burden of the building if the building's not used, for example, or the need is no longer there? Who's, do they remove the building? I mean, do you end up inheriting the maintenance or the liability of it? What, what happens with that?
I think it's, it goes to ancestral lands. It belongs to ancestral lands, and it depends on what the terms of the, of the lease agreement is. If it's a scrapyard, they got to clean everything out before, before they leave.
Well, I think it's just something to look at, because we've seen some interesting things, obviously, with land trusts, where the liability and the cost ends up becoming the land trust, and that was never the intent.
I'm, yeah.
If you don't have the resources to do any consistent review, because I, I mean, unless...
No, I agree. I agree.
Unless the governor can pay for the entire construction of this new hospital, if that's her desire, and maybe Uncle Sam's going to throw in a few nickels, I don't know. But there's no guarantee the future legislature's going to fund it.
Yeah, well, that's how, that's just basically how it is. The Ancestral Lands puts out a piece of property...
I understand. I mean, monies can be very enticing, but it's just something to be mindful of, because you might end up, the ancestral lands maybe, you know, end up with the burden.
Of course, yeah, and we've, we've had some situations in the past where it came back to BIDAS, for sure.
You know, the legislature has recently, it's just a few days ago, passed in the Budget Act, which of course, some of us have taken the position should not have been in the Budget Act, we should simply have dealt with the budget. But they decided to throw and essentially mandate, in the case of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, that they must negotiate, and very specific about who they must negotiate, which, you know, traditionally, in terms of procurement, just seems inappropriate, because then you're really showing your true colors, that you want specific interests to take over this property. And it's being mandated, you're being mandated to do it, irrelevant of what other authorities you've been given. Maybe you choose not to. Maybe you want to negotiate with someone else who might come up with a better deal. But in this case, the legislature has mandated that you do it, in the case of the land trust. How would you feel about the legislature? You know, because sometimes, I've been at this a long time, we put something up and say, this is what we're doing to help the ancestral lands and all those that have had their land taken and the injustice of that. That's why ancestral lands was created. Then we're saying, okay, we have another injustice with our Tomorrow people and those under the 1950 Organic Act were defined as being eligible, because they had an injustice. So we're going to take these public lands. I was there when these lands were converted to being land trust lands, and we're going to give it to the Land Trust Commission to oversee, and we're going to have the board oversee it. And we're going to say, this is what we've done for our Tomorrow people and all those that are eligible. And then yet, as time has gone on, and I was absent from the legislature for a good chunk of 14 years, I don't know what else the legislature has done with land trust land and taking it, not compensating in some cases, doing whatever, I don't know, because we have the power to do it. We created ancestral lands. We created Tomorrowland Trust. Therefore, we still have the authority to modify, change it, abolish it. It's our authority to do so.
Exactly.
Should we do it, though? What if we do that with you? What if we mandate you can't lease or sell Ede Agaga? Because there'll be a different legislature in a few months. Who knows?
The legislature's always...
Well, what is your view of that? Because we can override anything you do. How do you feel about that? Do you think we should see you guys as sacred and independent, or are you just simply going to absorb every time the legislature decides to take what it wants or enforce what it wants or force what it wants?
There's situations where it was, it was probably just, and there's some situations where I didn't think that was proper. But what, you're, you're, you're voted in, you can, you're, you're, it's your, I guess it's your responsibility to oversee these agencies, including ancestral lands.
Well, I understand that. I'm asking you, in terms of your position on the board, how do you feel about that, that intervention that happens and can happen moving forward? Because we can change the direction.
That's a tough question. Yeah, what, what if there's a, you know, I'm just hypothetical, if there's a little corruption going on somewhere, and, you know, you need to step in. Why would I want to limit you from, you know, not intervening? But in my case, we're not. This is, there's no corruption going on, of course. So I don't want you to just come in and arbitrarily just decide what properties to take out of the trust properties for some entity.
Well, I'm just saying it, because the legislature might intervene. Maybe the legislature in a few months decides otherwise. I'm just, I want to get your thoughts and your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would really appreciate if the legislature would get a hold of the, the commission members of, of the trusts, Tomorrowland Trust and Ancestral Lands, and get their take. Roundtable, especially on, on very serious matters like, you know, taking land and leasing Roundtable, especially on very serious matters like, you know, taking land and leasing it to somebody, or even trading it or selling it.
Well, again, I mean, the land trust's record is not as good. That's why I had to say, I found it interesting. We're the ones defending the land trust on the floor.
That's why I understand your questions.
And yet, I'm well aware of a lot of the issues and inconsistencies and outright abuse and misuse of the land trust. But I'm asking you these questions to get a gauge of your thoughts in your renomination back to the commission, and certainly the years that you've served, to get a gauge of that. Because I don't think it's gonna stop, unfortunately. I think there'll be different names and different faces up there, but the same old politics that, you know, will influence the dynamics that may be contrary to the intent of why ancestral lands was created, or in the case of the land trust, why the land trust was created. It might be window dressing.
Yeah, I agree. The farmer's market was one incident that ancestral lands basically was not involved in. And we had to absorb that. That's one situation where the legislature did it on their own.
Or any other future interest to extract property for other purposes?
Oh, no, we can't allow that.
You know, land and money, oh my gosh. Greed always prevails sometimes.
Any profits and generation of that kind of fund should go to the trust.
Well, I appreciate you responding to my questions. I mean, I've never one to be shy, so I just think because of those issues before us, I think it's important to get a take, because several of you are asking to be reappointed back to the commission. And I think it's important to have a good idea of what you're thinking and why you've made the decisions. Because this is obviously, in that particular case, a very political issue that has to deal with how we move forward with the construction of a new hospital, which I think is something that's important to the community, and we need to know why and how decisions got made and stuff like that.
Of course.
I appreciate you providing your input. With that, Senator Luhon, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Ron. How are you doing? And again, thank you for wanting to continue service to the people of Guam. In regards to the Edagaga, how much property is there?
I think it's about 100, about 102 acres, that's-
102 acres? Okay. And the GIDA managers are your properties, right?
Yes.
Property managers. And they would go up with the RFP as well for appraisals, right?
For-
Appraisals?
Ah, yes.
Appraisals?
Yes.
What did that appraisal value come back? Do you have an idea what that value came back?
Well, if it involved us paying it, I guess we'd be more alerted, but the ancestral lands didn't pay for that. They, it was the-
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but the appraisal value-
Oh, the appraisal value? Yeah, the appraisal value for the property-
The property that came back?
I don't think, did we ever get an appraisal number? Yeah.
Yes.
The appraisal report for Edagaga has not come back to us.
Oh, it hasn't come back yet?
We had a rough estimate, but-
Okay, what is the rough estimate?
Around 10, 11 million, maybe, something like that.
10 or 11 million?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, you said that in the resolution that you either lease or sell, but you were advised by your legal counsel that was all right, because you were moving towards a lease rather than a sale, right?
Yeah, yeah. So the option, it's not like we're committed to any of those, lease or sell, it's up to the board.
Okay. And, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And the board is pretty much for leasing the property at this stage of the game, yeah.
Okay. I mean, other than, I guess, legislative intervention to remove properties for whatever it may be, like you had an example earlier of the, I think, the market, that was done by, through legislation?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, that being taken out of-
It wasn't really taken out, it was, it is a lease agreement, it is a lease agreement with ancestral lands, yes. And the terms and conditions were set by the legislature.
By the legislature, okay. And you didn't have anything to do with it?
Yeah, exactly.
It was something-
I mean, it's not that we're for, not against the farmer's market, we're for, yeah, but we're also for our, and the farmer's market understands that, too.
Okay, let me ask you this. In terms and conditions the legislature put forth for that, was it in concert with the terms and conditions that you guys would normally put forth?
No, no.
No?
No. Far from it.
Far from it, like more or less, or?
Way less.
Way less?
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay. Okay, so you drive a heart of argon and the legislation does?
Well, we're true to our fiduciary duty to the trust.
Well, it's obvious, and you guys, I'm sure, once, again, your property managers go out there and put up an RFP, do they make a recommendation, or to you guys, this is what you should do? Or, because they manage your properties, right?
We basically tell them. We tell what we want, and hey, can we do this and that? And then we get our legal counsel, too, to make sure everything is, you know, proper. And, yeah, and of course, we're advised, hey, you can do that, you can do this, or hey, that's not typical, or that's not the norm, stuff like that.
Okay. So in concert with your legal counsel to advise you whichever way, your board members will do their due diligence then to come up with a, with your resolution? And you guys, I'm sure, your due diligence may not always agree in the outcome, but the majority would rule, right?
Yes, of course, yeah, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Senator Barnett, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Sido Smaas, Madam Chair. I just wanted to first provide an update, at least I'm aware of, talking about Edagaga and the sale/lease. It's my understanding that the most recent development is the governor provided a loan of $10 million in ARP funds, I believe, to Gora, to somehow pursue purchase of, what I'm hearing is private lands, but that's all I know from the resolution of the Gora Board, had entertained, so I'm not sure where that is or what property it is, but it's not Edagaga, right?
I have no idea, I have no idea.
So that's where we're at, in case people are wondering what the deal is with that.
Yeah, no idea what it is.
And maybe that's why you haven't seen any forward progress on the appraisal, or anything else to deal with that. I guess I just want to talk about the excess lands, and maybe your position, because it was a number of years ago, when I was in the media, I had foia'd a letter from the, then I think he was the Assistant Secretary of the Navy, Mr. Brathwaite, right? And in this letter, Eagles Field, USO and PD were deemed excess, right? And I think that's what kind of got a lot of the original landowners up-
I don't think it was deemed excess.
It was on the letter, it was listed.
No, I think it was deemed afterwards, not beforehand.
I'm just saying, we had the letter, and on the list, those properties were on the list.
Yeah, I think it was because of the interests of the government of Guam, to wanting, and then it was placed on there.
But to these original landowners, who I met with and interviewed, to them, the black and white of it was that they saw these lands under the excess column, and so I'm pretty sure they were of the mindset that-
Yes, and I disseminated some of those information to the landowners.
Right, right, right. And so their thought was, and you know, similar to what speakers' comments had been, was that our entire lean as a government has always been to fight for the return of excess lands, so that we can then give them over to the original landowners.
I think the federal government, just my take on it, was like, okay, we're willing to do this if you're gonna do the hosp- if not, it's not. You got a sunset clause or whatever, okay? If it ain't gonna be a hospital, we're taking it back. That's just my take on it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so it's, we're gonna deem it excess, because you want to use it, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I met with the original landowners, and they disagreed with, you know, your take on it. And they were of the opinion that, hey, we always fought for this return of these lands. And then the governor was subsequently interviewed in the media, and she had said that, oh, these landowners are all compensated already.
But all the land, all the landowners are fighting for our lands back. Anderson, everyone, we're fighting for it all. There's no difference. We've all been doing it.
I'm not making any judgment on you, Mr. Eklave. I'm just recalling the events, you know?
To me, it's just-
I was at Miss Elsie Flores' kitchen table, and you know, she should work for Department of Land Management, because she had like boxes and boxes of maps, and she went and she laid out all the maps, and she told me the whole story of her father's property, which I'm sure you're very well aware of. And I think for them, that's what it was, was that you had this document, for whatever reason, that listed these lands as excess. And so, of course, the original landowners, they see that, and they automatically would knee-jerk to what we've always done in the past, which is-
Yeah, if the real situation was just that they accessed it, because there was a negotiation for hospital, yeah.
No, I get that, and I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that they are muscle memory trained, because our government's position has always been, you know, for the most part, let's give it back to the original landowners, not let's see it deemed excess and then try and enter into a hundred year lease.
I mean, if they could access it, give it back.
Right.
That's our point of view.
Did you have any updates?
If you could have accessed it right then and there, give it back, whether it's a hospital or not.
Right.
That's our take on it.
Yeah, which I think we should keep that take, you know what I mean? And this whole, I think that's what has caused a lot of the frustration with this Eagles Field thing, is we, for me, it was kind of a big departure, you know, in recent memory from where we were always at, which was like, let's go, you know, this is why I'll get jumped the fence. You know what I mean? Let's go, we get these excess lands, let's give them back, right? And for these original landowners that I met with and I interviewed, they didn't understand or necessarily care that there was some arrangement made with the governor and Admiral of the Navy. All they saw was land that's under excess, you know what that means, like give it back to the people, right? And so, I think that's for me what is, because there's been a lot of accusations, Levie, where the administration has said that, you know, people in this body, I mean, to include me, were stringing the original landowners along. And no, I never spoke with them about what I thought these documents meant. It was always them telling me, boy, this is how we always did it. And, you know, you had the governor out there saying that they were fairly compensated, and the people I met with said, oh, they got six cents an acre. You know what I mean? So I just want to, and I support your nomination, of course, I've, you know, been following the work that you do. But did you have any update on the USO property? Because I know that at the time, that Eagles Field was deemed excess, this property as well.
I think that's still in the process, it hasn't come to us yet. I think it's still in the process. We got notice of it, we got notice, the director personally informed me and the board that this may be coming back. And, okay, we're looking forward to give those lands back to the original landowners.
And so that's what you are-
That's our intention.
Intention to do with that property.
Yes, get the property to ancestral lands and deed these properties back to the original landowners.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eklave. Sido Smaas. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
But by the way, real quick, Senator, there's the rules and regs you mentioned previously to one of our, the rules and regs haven't been adopted yet for ancestral lands, just to be clear on that. Whereas CLTC does have the rules, and we don't have our rules and regs in place just yet. It's just a clarification.
Sido Smaas.
Sido Smaas. Just before we go to Senator Perez, just wanted to remind, according to the law, your law, it says that you shall be updated by the Director of Land Management. So I don't, I guess, I don't want you to be guessing or saying you think, but you really actually should be in the know. You should require the documents to show you, and so that you're fully updated.
This is regarding the excess, excess lands? And I believe that Joey's been, you know, I've been following up with him, and with the directors, and with GIDA, and so he basically gives me the updates.
All right, but the commissioners should, in a formal way, receive this, because that's how you move to update your land registry or not, your excess registry. That's how you know how many beneficiaries you have or not. Like you're telling me what you think the status of USO is, you know, that might, for me, I think there's a more updated status, a real concrete one, that you actually have to know.
If you're, I'll definitely move on that, I will move on that.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying the law says you should be updated by the Director of Land Management, so you should require that, and you should have that an update at every one of your meetings.
I will make sure that I follow up on that. Thank you.
Sido Smaas. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, Ron.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, so I think it's good that you've stated on the record that your preference is to return the lands to the original landowners.
Yes.
Okay, that's a good thing. So, yeah, so the other thing I'm seeing is that, you know, the definition of excess lands is very clear here, that it's deemed excess by the federal government. But I also would like to maybe advocate for more of a proactive approach, because, you know, anticipating that perhaps more lands can be deemed excess, and even working with the Director of Department of Land Management to gather that information. Because, you know, as generations pass, you know, we need to know who is the beneficiaries from, or who's going to be handed down the land. And so, you know, I think that, you know, that's one of the issues that I see, is, you know, the proactive approach to really update the registry. I mean, and maybe if you could speak to that, what has been your approach to make sure these registries are updated?
Are you talking about the original landowners themselves, the registry for the original landowners? Or are you referring to excess lands?
Original landowners, because you know-
Well, we encourage everyone to file a claim on all their properties, whether it's in, given back or not. We encourage all landowners to come in and make a claim.
Yeah, but I guess the idea is to streamline the process, because we already, you know, through our records, we may know who is already, you know, landowners and their descendants.
Yes, yes, and even the John Bond case makes that pretty clear.
Okay, yeah. Do we have a full accounting of that, then?
Joey? I think we do. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
We do? Okay, okay, great. The other thing in the law states that there was a comprehensive zoning plan. What is your familiarity and knowledge regarding that? Because according to the law, it states that there was supposed to be a plan that was developed with other agencies, such as Department of Land Management, EPA, Ag-
That was done with, I believe, the northern side, the Harmon Cliffline area. There was a zoning plan that was done up there, and I think Baragada, if I'm not mistaken? Baragada, Joey? Yep?
Yeah, so this includes all ancestral lands, so-
Some of our lands are, they are, I think they're agriculture, right? Most of them are agriculture, Joey?
Mister, okay, this is Joey Leon-Gorrel, the director, I mean, sorry, the, one of the employees at the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. If you could come to the microphone, and if you're going to answer, just put it on the record. What was the question, Senator?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up information regarding the comprehensive zoning. This pertains to all ancestral lands, and so, I mean, this kind of ties in with the questions of my colleagues, where, you know, if anyone's interested in development, you know, what is the ready plan in place versus, you know, dealing with-
Well, if you're talking about our crown lands, basically, we're just trying to generate revenue, of course, to compensate the beneficiaries, who the, you know, the designated beneficiaries are. That's what we're doing. And so these lands are, you know, we basically, if we RFP it out, we have to come, the winner of the RFP survey it and do everything with the property.
My understanding is this is a more proactive measure? So before you even entertain an RFP, that this should have been done in advance to kind of like make sure that, you know, the environment also is taken care of, as well as other things? So it doesn't, it just states all ancestral lands? It doesn't say specifically crown lands?
You're talking about crown lands, right? All our crown lands? Just the crown lands, and not, right? The crown lands, because that's all, basically, the ones that are returnable, that's a different matter. You're talking about crown lands we have, that we use to generate funds to, right, to compensate the beneficiaries? That's what you're asking about, correct?
It states here, shall complete a comprehensive zoning plan for all properties and parcels under the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So that's what it states in the law.
A comprehensive zoning plan, Joey?
Does it exist?
That, right now, the properties are zoned already, Joey, right? They're Zone A. Most of the properties are Zone A.
Yeah, but is a comprehensive plan created by the Guam Ancestral Lands-
No, we don't, we don't, we don't-
In collaboration with EPA, Department of Ag-
No, we don't do anything yet like that until we have an idea of what we're gonna do with the property to develop it, per se. Are you saying we should? We should?
Well, the law states that. There should be a provisional commission to address development of all ancestral lands. So it seems like, yeah, it's going against the intent, I think, but what you're saying is against the intent of what the law states.
Well, when we RFP a piece of property, and they're gonna develop it, it goes through all the processes of the permitting process with everyone, the environmental, shipo, it goes through that whole process. What they do is they come up with a plan, they make the proposal, we look at it, and if that's the winner of the RFP, they get the highest points, then they follow that plan, and they gotta show us and go through the, you know, the processes, the permitting process, that it's all clear. So I'm just kind of like unsure what that provision really is, to be honest with you.
Yeah, maybe we could, I could share with you later. We could talk, I could share with, share with you later. But Joey, if you had anything to add to this, I appreciate it.
Yes, so Joey Leon Guerrero from the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So after that law was, or there was a subsequent law that was passed. Which I guess did away with the, the provisional commission and they just blanketed everything agriculture. So we, we never. We did have those meetings. But I guess to, to expedite the return of these lands and, and to get these landowners in. The tax role, the legislature just blanketed everything agricultural zoned. And so we didn't need to. Continue that process. I, I can, and I'll, I'll get the public law for you on that. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. All right, thank you. Thank you for that response. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sido Smaasia. There's a couple of things before we end. I want to clarify, so. All right, so according to 80103D, it says that the commission shall adopt rules and regs governing the conduct of its affairs. It shall elect a chairperson and vice chair from among the commissioners. And may employ an executive director and such staff as is necessary to carry out the duties set forth in this chapter. So this is something completely, totally within the commissioner's purview. I know this is not like the practice, but it's the same thing within Chumor Land Trust Commission. And pointing out to them, this is their purview. It really should be something that you, someone you can hold accountable to do. All right, and that's. There is a. Would you say you are able to withstand political pressure in your role in the Ancestral Lands Commission? Would you say you're able to withstand political pressure and keep focus on the mission of the Ancestral Lands Commission?
Yes, yes, of course.
All right. And the, I did pull out the letter from the Secretary of the Navy where he writes back to the governor of Guam. And this is the process that Congress set forth is how we're going to deem excess lands. And so. Guam sends their list and then the Secretary of the Navy responds. And so he did on July 2, 2020. Respond and put on the list those. Properties, right? A7A and B Anderson, Baragada Annex, this is the Eagles Field. Saying these are his potential transfer, that means they're on the list for the net negative inventory promise that they made is on the list of. To, you know, be transferred. And the USO, this is back in 2019, this letter, USO was already transferring progress. That's why I think. The status really should be very clear to you. And when they say. Oh, you know, I think it's this, I really feel like of all the people in Guam, the Ancestral Lands Commission should really be updated with very formal, very, very formally as to. What's, what the status is when it comes to excess lands. I had asked Gita when they were here last for another hearing on the, maybe the AT&amp;T lease, right? And I asked them, they said something about there are no further. Excess lands being returned. There's a hold or there's a moratorium. And I said, where do you get that? Is there a document or something? Because I can't, I've been asking and I have not seen any other document after July 2, 2020 from the Secretary of the Navy. So if you guys have anything like that where you're saying. Oh, it's, there's a condition or there's this or there's that. I have not seen that document and I want to see that document. So. If you, if you run across that in your work, yeah, please share that with me. And that would explain a lot, but that's not in writing at all right now. According to what I can see. All right. I want to thank my colleagues for their questions to the panel. I know it's been kind of tough. Joey, did you want to say something? Yes.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out that our board members' terms are supposed to be staggered, so I'm not sure. Does that get handled with, in, in your?
That's a.
Or is that the front office?
Thing, I guess maybe, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I wanted to point out, so these appointments, interestingly. Came. Here. So they came, they all came in August. But I think. I can't tell the expiration date and it looks to me like these are all expired. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yeah, so they've already been expired, but we just got the appointments. That's why I set this up so fast, but it's, yeah, I'm not sure how to. Originally, they're all supposed to be staggered. I think because they all terminated already and they weren't renewed. In that staggered way that. I'm not sure how that's going to work because my intention is to have the hearing and, and move them all at the same time or not move them.
If, if I may, they were all expired March 26.
Okay.
That's how they came to our office. Their expirations were all the same, the four of them. And then the two of them. Commissioner Westling and Commissioner Camacho, they were expired in August.
Right. So they, but we had received theirs earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we took care of those. We actually voted on them today.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So. All right. But thank you for bringing that up. I'm not sure what to do about the stagger, but we'll try to address it. Again, thank you to all of you.
Correct, one thing real quick. Um, we really appreciate the legislature. If you could really look into our funding more for our, our, our agency. I mean, if you support our agency, we, 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 we look, we look for your support in, in, in helping us. With our agency with, we, we had to get rid of one of our staff members. And we're, we're basically. Running, you know, it's, we're, we're struggling, but we appreciate you looking into the funding. And I know you've already passed the budget, I guess, or something, but. We look forward to, to, to your support.
Well, I know that we did when we got to the ancestral lands portion of the budget. I pointed out it wasn't a big increase of anything, maybe nothing. So, but the issue is to me that they were funding or they're allowing operations out of some of the leases, right? Whereas all the rest of the leases in, income goes towards that bank, the trust bank.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and so this is why, yeah, it's very. Important that we are getting the best value for your land, that you're getting, you know, that you are soliciting. From as many people as possible so you can get the best value. It's, that's, yeah. I don't, I don't, I want, you know, we have beneficiaries to, to address and, but we will look into that. We'll keep that in mind. I do keep that in mind all the time. I want you to be able to function to your maximum, but, yeah, it's.
Yes, we've always got that, that big concern from you regarding if we're, we're, we're properly funded.
Yeah, and whether we're using the trust money.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that belongs to beneficiaries for operations. All right, so Sido Smaasia again, Mr. Chair and Acting Director and, and. Mr. Leon Guerrero and, and to all the other nominees, thank you very much for your time today. I very much apologize for the delay. Our session was not expected to go on till today. When we set this hearing. So again, thank you again for all your cooperation and your, your work for 21 years, all three of you.
Thank you too, Sido Smaasia.
And so this hearing will be deemed adjourned. It is 12:40. Sido Smaasia.